Can you make it so I can share a screen?
Yeah. Awesome.
And it's showtime.
It's showtime now. Good evening, everybody. The Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public meeting on Tuesday, September 26, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the Newton Town Hall. First order is saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So Mr. Ryan is not available tonight, so I would like to appoint Mr. Gibbons for Mr. Ryan's seat. And then, we don't need to make a motion right now. Okay, perfect. And then online tonight, we have Ms. White, Ms. Eddy, and why am I blanking on Raina's last name?
Burke.
Burke, thank you.
I got you.
With an E at the end, correct? B U R K?
Absolutely, B as in boy, U R K E.
Thank you. Jimmy even has it on my list in front of me. Awesome. So the first order of business tonight is a conceptual review. So just for everybody's information, that anything that is discussed tonight is not binding in either way, so no motions can be made. So Mr. Michael Montello of Amesbury, Massachusetts requests a conceptual review of plans for a subdivision at 104 North Main Street, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 9, Block 1, Lot 6. The floor is yours.
Good evening. I'm Eric Bodeman with Millennium Engineering. With me tonight is Mike Montello, who is a property owner. So the property we're speaking about is 104 North Main Street. It's about 52 acres. It's got some challenges. The front of the property, there's a gas line easement 300 feet or so into the property comes through there. The front of, a bunch of the, front of the property is also wet. So the plan you, we have here is a plan with a thousand-foot-long roadway, which we believe meets your requirements. It's five lots. There's a lot of work to be done still. We haven't done soils, haven't done any soils testing or anything like that. After this meeting, I'm going to go meet with the fire chief. My understanding is I need to get his input on road width and things like that. Your current standards are for a 24-foot-wide roadway. Through the wetland, we're going to try to go with a 20-foot-wide roadway if the fire chief approves it and ultimately if you guys approve it. So that's the option one, which is by right, you know, kind of meeting your requirements, no waivers or anything. The second alternative is, as you can see, is a longer roadway, which is 1,500 feet, which my understanding is you can approve if you want to. You don't have to, obviously. So that's really what I'd like to discuss tonight, is what your thoughts are on that. One of the things also on the site is, I'll point it out for you. That's an old beehive foundation that we're going to obviously have to preserve. So we've designed the roadway to go around that. Like I said, we haven't done any soils. We don't know that the lots as proposed meet the lot sizing requirements for soils. But we want to start the discussion with you and get your input on what your thoughts are. Excuse me.
So is that what I see in the map that the forward roadway and there's the beehive and then coming around this way and up around here? I'm not quite sure what this is.
I think those are, ah, those are wetland buffers.
Those, yeah, those are wetland buffers. Yes. Yep. Yep.
It was just hard for me to see with all the other stuff there. It's not really colored in or whatever. See, I know they're only conceptual.
You've already delineated the entire parcel.
Yes, yes. Mark West from West Environmental delineated the parcel. We've met with him a couple times and changed our design based on his input because there are going to be some wetland impacts because the whole front of the lot is wet. So the alternatives we have here, he believes he can get permitted. He believes they're reasonable enough to get permitted.
That would require CBA, right? The zoning board to give a variance for that.
It's a special exception, but yeah.
Right. For the wetlands.
And also the reduced road requirements, you would have to grant a waiver from.
Just so you're aware of that.
Yes.
Everybody has to say yes.
Yep. That and the fact that we discussed not too long ago with another set of plans that came to us with that gas line easement, there have been some new adjustments from the state and the company about how to go over that. So you'd have to deal with the gas company and discuss them with that and get a...
You effectively need a letter from the gas company. It's their standard.
What you're going to do is copasthetic.
Yeah, yeah. And then actually, it's part of Mr. Montello's deed that it actually says that right in the deed that to cross the gas line, you need to get their permission. So when we have a design further along, we'll meet with them with our design and make sure they're okay with it and get their approval.
Yep, we just want to make sure you're aware of all the stuff.
Absolutely. And if for some reason, say, the fire chief doesn't like the narrower roadway through the wetlands, then we'll just go with your standard roadway and we'll have more impacts in the wetlands.
Do you know approximately how long the 20-foot section is? 10 feet, 100 feet?
It's more like 300 feet.
Okay.
Something like that. We haven't fully figured it out yet, but it's a, it's a, the beginning of the lot, there's a, it's a lot of wetlands there.
But it's, I did obviously figure it to ballpark numbers. That's a, you're trying to reduce the wetland impacts by 1,200 square feet.
Yeah. Yeah, I think our original, our original plan...
12,000? Did I do that right?
Our original plan had the impacts at about 9,000 square feet. After meeting with Mark West, we're down to about 6,000. And part of that is that where we're going is where the existing driveway is into the site. So part of the roadway is not having any impact on the wetlands.
Did you have something else?
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts. On the lot with the longer road, Lot 1, the actual building envelope, you're showing it with 0.41 acres of dry. You know, once you get into side setbacks and front setbacks, that's a pretty small building envelope.
Yeah, yeah. And we understand that that may not work physically, that may not work at this point. We just haven't dug into it.
And my just one other comment is the, I didn't have a chance to look at this, but the stream may actually fall under the town's shore land.
Yep.
Requirements. So that, just additional buffering that may have impact on your lot sizing.
Yep. Yeah, we have to look at that and we have to look at the floodplain, see if any of this is in the floodplain.
It is not in the floodplain.
And I know that it's all in the aquifer protection district, so there's some higher standards to meet.
And with the construction of any new road, short or long, the stormwater requirements are also going to come into play.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And that's going to be the, one of the challenges because of all the wetlands making it, making everything work. Ultimately, though, what we'd like to do is come back in front of you, obviously with the plans, with the 1,500-foot-long roadway. Understand that you can't commit to anything, but I'm hoping that at this point, you don't have any heartache with that.
Do we have precedent in town, Jim? Are you aware of other roads that we've, I know we just went down this route.
You guys have a handful of roads over the years that have exceeded your length. As long, it basically comes down to if emergency services can service it and if it effectively makes sense whether waivers have been granted. There has to be a reasonable justification.
Okay. And is the intent to turn this over to the town or is...
That would be the intent. We're not sure we're going to get there at this point because my understanding is that if we go with a narrower cross-section, the town may not want to take it over, at which point it would be, remain a private road.
I did speak with the road agent and he doesn't, if it's a private road, he doesn't care about the width. If it's a public road, it has to be to the full, to the full dimensions.
I was just going to say that with all the conversations I've had with Mr. Povero in the past, he's talked about how some of these roads have been constructed and he has not been too pleased when they haven't been built to specifications for town roads. And he told me that he does not want to accept, have the town accept any more town roads that are not built to specifications.
Oh, I couldn't agree more.
Yep.
I mean, you have a pretty strict set of standards for what you want, for gravel and pavement and everything.
Yep.
There's no reason why they shouldn't be built to that standard.
And I think that for dimensions as well, so I think that sways your decision either way. So it appears that...
Right.
The only way we would be interested in, regardless of the total length of the road, if you're trying to flip it to public.
If it meets your standards, it meets all the standards is what you're saying, yeah.
Well, you certainly should look at, or listen to your road agent. I don't mean to say you shouldn't, but that discretion actually is with the planning board for planning purposes. Now, you should listen to your road agent, but he is not the final decision maker on the road width.
No, he's not on the width.
The town accepts it.
But if the town accepts it, and being a selectman, I would tend to lean heavily on my road agent.
Totally understand.
Yeah. Clarification, yeah. So we could choose to make it narrower and then approve it to be narrower, however, you may go over to his side of the table and you're, no.
Right, right. And the town could just say, no, we're not going to take it, absolutely. And part of the discussion, and one of the things with the fire chief, is making sure that he's comfortable if we have, if we have a narrower section of roadway, make sure he's comfortable with access and what's he, does he need anything special because of it or whatnot, you know, so?
And you're proposing a 100-foot cul-de-sac turnaround?
Yeah.
So just as you're designing, going through considerations, you are welcome to reach out to me and through Jim, and I'm happy to give feedback. I mean, I don't make any decisions for the board, certainly, but if you have questions about a regulation or how you may have to fit within something, certainly. Please feel free to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm sure we'll do that because it'll, there's a lot of detail that we need to pay attention to on this one.
Yeah, and you're obviously aware of all the state permits, just driveway permit?
Oh, yes.
OT probably.
Yeah, it's definitely going to be an AOT permit, no doubt about it. Used to be you could just do the roadway and then do the lot separately, but now they make it count it all.
Just a question, Plan 2 is your preference, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That allows more houses on smaller acreage, which would make the houses probably less expensive because you have to buy so many acres of property when you're buying your house?
Well, what it really does is it makes the project more affordable because like the first 500 feet of roadway, we're not getting any lots, right? So there's really only about 1,000, if we did a 1,500-foot road, there's really only about 1,000 feet of roadway where you can get lots off of because of the wetlands. So with the shorter roadway, it becomes, I don't want to say it becomes economically unfeasible, but it gets really tight because you have a, you're building all this roadway without getting any lots for it.
Thank you. Do you have any comments from Barbara, Emily, Raina?
Okay, yeah, hi. This is Barbara. Well, I was looking and I, myself, I prefer Concept 1 only because there's less paved surface and the five lots instead of 10 would be less impact to the aquifer. That's my take on it.
Less impact to what did she say?
The aquifer.
Oh, the aquifer.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah.
Sorry.
This is Raina, sorry. I'm just curious to know if you've had New Hampshire Fish and Game out there to check any of the species that are in that wetland and if there were any like endangered species that were possibly going to be impacted, only because to Barbara's point, there is a lot of wetland on this property. So I'm just curious to know if you've done any of that research.
At this point, we have not, but we will be doing that, absolutely. Mark West will be doing a wildlife study to find out what's out there, what animals are out there and what part of the site they're on.
All right, excellent. Just because I'm studying conservation and sustainability, but we, our turtles are pretty understudied in New Hampshire and we do have three species that are threatened and endangered. So I just want to, you know, where they're fairly understudied, if we at least get that survey done, that'd be nice.
Just so you know, as part of the alteration of terrain permit they're going to need, they have to evaluate it for wildlife.
And part of, and one thing, I guess, part of the reason why I think this, the whole front of the site is wet is that whenever that driveway was put in a long time ago, there's basically a really small pipe underneath it that is not big enough to drain, so the water's all backing up. You know, unfortunately, at this point, it's a wetland, so there's not, nothing we can do about it, but unfortunately, they didn't do it right when they did that, you know, I don't know, 50 years ago, 75 years ago.
Emily?
No questions at this time.
Awesome. And we don't, can we open this up to public?
You can.
Is there anybody from the public?
Hi, Sandra Estherbrook. I live on New Boston Road. So I was reading the site plan regulations and there are quite a few about existing conditions and like historical preservation. So where he did mention that beehive foundation, I was wondering to make sure, see what we could do about saving that, a possible sidewalk or stuff like that. I'm also on Conservation Commission, so when the plan comes, we'll probably be reviewing that. I'm not representing conservation tonight, I'm here on my own, but when they do get the plan, we'll be looking at that for different wetlands and stuff like that. But I guess basically today, my concern was that beehive foundation, is it a historic and is there other, however you say that word, stuff around that area that, you know, could be, you know, historical that we need to preserve? So I wasn't sure how they would look into that.
Sure. Jen, do you have any, I should know this better. Will that trip when they file a...
A 106 review? No. I'm sorry, it will, it will cause a review through AOT if there are any artifacts. It is unlikely that it will cause any significant impact on the awarding of that permit, everything else aside. The planning board certainly can, you require in your regulations that historic artifacts be acknowledged, that's why they have the beehive on their conceptual. You know, you can certainly do a sidewalk once an application is submitted and you accept jurisdiction. It's always useful. I honestly am not totally sure what a beehive foundation is, so I'm going to go look that up after the meeting. But there are ways of preserving historic resources such as a small foundation or headstones without necessarily saying the project can't move forward. The road going around it is a good start.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, Site Plan Regulation is 714N and then 7210 and then actually on the general principles, 8.1, it's F number 3. And then it is also in some of the subdivision regulations about, you know, what to do and how to handle those things. So I'd like to see a little bit on that when the plan comes out. And then, yeah, he said the 100, 1,500 foot's going to be 10 lots. So, and then I was wondering if there's going to be like any conservation subdivision or is it just a regular subdivision? I guess that'll be up to him when he presents it, but that's what I'm, what I read about.
Just to address a couple of questions. At this point, we don't know whether we're going to do a conservation, you know, subdivision. I'm not so sure it really works on this site because of all the wetlands and everything, but we're going to look at it. And as for the beehive foundation, I, we have every intention of working with you, putting a fence around it, you know, to make sure it doesn't get damaged. And I can also see potentially where we just put a few parking spaces there if people want to come and look at it. I was told it was a cave when we started, there's a cave out there. I said, how the heck is there a cave out there? And it turns out, it's just, it's basically, it's the foundation that's built up out of the ground.
Yeah, I'm only aware of it because I think somebody posted about it online recently and then I went off on a rabbit hole of researching beehive foundations.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, we haven't, we, obviously, we have every intention of preserving that.
Okay.
I'm into like history and stuff like that, so I wouldn't want, I would make sure no matter what, even if everybody said, oh, no, what have you done? I'd go around that personally because I want stuff like that. I think stuff like that's very cool.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anybody come to the America's Home?
Yep.
You know, I thought that was the president, stuff like that, you know?
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing you in the future.
It's going to be a long winter.
Get your work cut out for you.
Hopefully it's not snowing all over, because we might as well be out.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda tonight is acceptance of the meeting minutes from September 12, 2023. Thank you, Jim, for your dissertation, dissertation. They were quite lengthy.
Oh, those were fairly short. You missed my tones, I guess.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Raina seconded it, Jim.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Marsham?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Ms. Burke?
Aye.
Mrs. Eddy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Your name is?
Thank you. We have the NEPRO manifest on the agenda, but there is no NEPRO manifest.
Yep.
So we'll skip that. Updating the floodplain ordinance, Jen.
Yep. So back on the 20th, the town, I was CC'd, got notification from Office of Planning and Development, it's the state floodplain program that's, because of the pending updates to the flood insurance rate maps, these are the FEMA flood maps in this part of New Hampshire, that there are some recommendations that they give to every town, I've worked with this on a couple of towns, to amend your floodplain regulations. So they have provided language and recommendations for modification to your floodplain ordinance. It would be prudent to work through that and then try to get that on the warrant for March. I think, Jim, you sent out the proposed language?
I think I shared it with everybody else.
Okay. I haven't had a full chance to go through all of it. I'm pretty familiar with the changes they have probably proposed, but I would like the board to consider having this be a big discussion at an upcoming work session. But I do want to emphasize, and I'm just going to share my screen real quick.
And just for clarification, Jen, the floodplain maps in our town did change slightly, correct?
Ever so slightly, yes.
Specifically on the southern part of the town?
Yep. They got ever so slightly bigger and I apologize, it's not... Sorry, too many screens happening. So this is your current floodplain. So there's a little bit up near Country Pond.
Yep.
And you have a little bit down in the southern part of town. This area got ever so slightly bigger and up by Country Pond got ever so slightly bigger. There's a little pocket over by the corner of Southampton that also is just about the same. I think it changed by mere feet. So you don't have a lot of floodplain. This impacts very few properties, but to ensure that they are able to have their floodplain insurance or their flood insurance and to make sure that the town is properly meeting its hazard mitigation plan obligations, it is strongly, strongly recommended by FEMA, by Office of Planning Development, honestly, by my agency, that we work to get these on the books. They are minor amendments, they are not significant. And I also did get one comment from Barbara regarding some historic resources that I will have a answer for her pending a future discussion. So this is one of the most useful things that OPD actually does, is providing, you need this, here's the language. So...
And it's almost drop and, almost like plug and play, drop and exist?
They even provide the model warrant language, so.
And Jen stated, we'd like to get that warrant...
Yep.
Sooner rather than later, because when we blink, we're going to be into knocking on the doorway.
Yep.
And we'd want to make sure that we have all our warrants ready to go.
So I think it actually is really only probably a one-meeting discussion for you folks and then we need to have it moved to public hearing, which needs to be noticed. I would recommend we schedule a public hearing for either later in November or the first meeting in December, just so that it is close enough to town meeting that it doesn't trigger some issues with building permits, because this is one of those ones that could potentially impact building permits. And if you have a warrant article that will make something more stringent, which this would make it ever so slightly more stringent, it could hold up someone's building permits if they happen to be on the floodplain. So to avoid that, doing it as far into 2023 would be prudent.
So I would suggest with what Jen said, that we could have the discussion with the board during our part towards the end of November and then have the public hearing towards the beginning of December, so that we're not getting all caught up in these holidays.
So you can actually have the discussion before November. We could do it at the next meeting if you wanted to and just have the public hearing.
That's what I mean.
Be in November or December.
Yeah, at the very beginning of December. Like I said, because then everything really starts to snowball with getting the different warrants and stuff together.
Jim?
Dennis, this is Barbara. Jen, could you, could you put that map back up there a minute and show me the bottom of it again?
Sure.
Okay. That little piece down on the bottom, is that by Plastow? Is that like over by 125 Development?
No, 125, well, no. 125 Development is, they come off of Puzzle Lane here and the, this is Sergeant Woods right in this vicinity. So this is Puzzle Lane and 125 Development Corp.'s property.
Okay, all right.
It's not, it's not in the floodplain, nor would it be.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I'd suggest that you do this at the second October meeting, simply that the next meeting, you have 125s, 44 residential units, you have a amended site plan and possibly another conceptual review.
Okay.
So the next meeting's, the agenda plus the other matter that you sent the email about.
That has to be added.
Right.
Let's book it now.
Okay. So I would request that folks skim through that language and note where it's got additions and modifications. And if you have any questions on it, you have, if you could send those to me ahead of time, that might help our discussion, but obviously you can have questions after discussion as well.
Jim, could you please make sure that you resend that to me? I might have got lost in some of my other emails.
I know I added you to the dispersal list because you got...
No, I know, I remember looking at it, but I also remember that I get so many emails, I have to delete some so I can keep up with trying to, when I need to look stuff up. And I might have accidentally deleted that one.
I think I just crossed 200,000 last week.
Yeah. Crazy, right? Between you with work and then everything else.
Can I also suggest at that meeting, you might want to discuss the change to the gross vehicle weight limit for...
Sure, from 12,000 to 26,000 or... Sure, from 12,000 to 26,000, or do you want to do 25,999?
Twenty-six, now you're pushing class, a 10-wheeler.
Yes. Do you want to do 25,999? Or greater than 20?
That's what the meeting is for, so that you can discuss that possibility.
Okay.
I can do, I'll do the research for you beforehand, but...
Yeah, class B is, I believe, just over 26,000.
I should know that. Where's my wallet?
I wanna, I wanna say 26,900 and change, probably.
But working on that regulation is really the intention. We can come up with the correct number and discuss it.
Was I close?
Yes.
I've been driving 10-wheelers for 40-plus years.
One other item for possible change. It's on a list on my desk. It's not in front of me.
Okay. Yeah, why don't we just grab them all?
I'll put that on as a general topic.
We good on the floodplain?
Yeah, I do have one other zoning item, if you wanna talk about that before the housing stuff. Um, so there is a grant available right now.
We love grants.
It's a good one. Um, it's through the Local Source Water Protection Program. My office has been really successful at getting these grants for towns to help them update their groundwater protection district or aquifer districts. I worked with Newton maybe five or six years ago to update some basic language in your aquifer. Um, but there has been updates to the state model ordinance that would be good to incorporate into your aquifer protection district. Possibly not expanding, possibly just making it a little bit clearer and more streamlined in a few cases, but there is, the grant's available to work on that. So the grant is available and can be applied for, for November 1st. There's no match. It's about a $10,000 project. We will likely be working with Southampton as well to update their aquifer ordinance. Um, we're pretty successful at getting these. If you guys are interested in having basically DES pay me to help work on your aquifer protection district.
Let's make it happen.
I don't think the Concombs is gonna object.
Sounds good to me.
Um, yeah, and, you know, there's no obligation that you adopt the proposed regulations. It is just, if my office can apply for it, we can work it through. It's a good faith effort that you will continue to work with the RPC.
Very similar to the housing.
It is similar, just a very different topic.
Yep.
It's always good to update, like you said, to make sure everything's in line for the residents in town.
Okay. So what I will do is I will bring a draft scope probably for that second October meeting. Um, I can also provide a template for a letter of support. That would be the one thing I would need a vote of the planning board, if you are willing to do a letter of support for that. That work wouldn't be for doing ordinance work until next fall. So next summer and fall would really be when it would start.
So we can apply for the grant November 1st. They review slash award?
It gets awarded in late spring, so then we can start to work on it for summer, fall, and then into voting season. And then there has to be education and outreach, a couple of presentations, putting together documentation for folks, so they understand the impact. The map I'm showing right now, just for edification, is where there is the solid pink, it's, I guess, sort of a mauve color, that is your aquifer. That is your stratified drift aquifer that is mapped for this part of New Hampshire. That is also your local aquifer protection district. Um, one of the items that gets talked about when you're doing ordinance updates is whether you want to include your wellhead protection areas. Those are these circles that you're seeing. What those are is areas around a community water supply. So a neighborhood, Sergeant Woods would qualify a cul-de-sac that is a larger cul-de-sac that has more than...
Location that was in front of us last week, two weeks ago.
Yep.
Would have one.
Um, the aquifer, I'm sorry, the wellhead protection areas go off property. That is just, it's the area that if there was pollution or potential contamination, has a likely chance to actually get into the well. The more water you're pumping, the bigger the wellhead protection area. Some communities protect them, some do not. Newton currently does not. You protect many wellhead protection areas simply by protecting your aquifer, but you don't do complete protection of a few of them. So that, that would be a discussion that we would want to have during any update. That's probably the most significant one that many communities consider. It does offer an increased level of protection, but it does also add additional layers to what folks can do on their property.
Does Country Pond come into play on that, or is there just, I mean, simply because it's a lake with residents, you know, practically with wells 100 feet away from it?
Um, it does not. So because those are all private wells, it doesn't, private wells in the state are, have a 75-foot radius. It's a state requirement. Newton has 100-foot well radius. So it doesn't directly come into play, but when you're protecting, in this case, fully around Country Pond, your aquifer protection district exists. It wouldn't really impact in that vicinity very much, because most of the protection measures that come with an aquifer protection are really more industrial or commercial uses. Well, septic systems play into it, like how far is the bottom of the leach field from the seasonal high watermark? That has to do with how much room it has to filter before it hits the groundwater. It doesn't really apply to a lot of other residential uses typically. Though it's mainly your more commercial, retail, industrial uses. So I'm, I'm getting consensus. I should move forward and come back at the October meeting. Okay.
Thumbs up.
Yep.
I was just wondering if you wanted to send that letter of recommendation to the conservation would help if we sent one in, too?
It absolutely would. So I can send the scope of work that I'll show to the planning board, and I can send a letter template for the conservation commission to consider.
We could talk about it at our October meeting and then...
Yeah, I'll probably have it by the second week of October. I think that gives you guys enough time.
The second Wednesday, yeah.
I will do my best to get it to you in time for consideration at your meeting.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Yes. All right, that's how, all I have on that topic.
Next, moving on to Invest New Hampshire Update and Master Plan Housing Chapter. The survey is done.
The survey is done.
Ta-da!
So, all right. Apologize. Once again, I have too many screens open. So the survey is done. Uh, we got 110 responses. Not hitting out of the ballpark, but we're still in the game. So we did pretty well, and I'm pretty impressed. I, I thank Jim and everybody else who helped to get the word out. Um, we did get some really rich comments. I had sent out a link, um, maybe two weeks ago, three weeks ago, so you guys could see the comments in real time. That link, if you click it right now, you can see the full suite of comments. There are two comments very specifically that I would like your permission to redact, because they are, they name names and are very specific personal attacks. So I would like to redact those, just the names from the comments. Leave the rest of the comments, but just remove the names.
I would definitely say that that needs to be done, could be because I've read them.
Okay. So I can do that, and that would be when we publish the full suite of comments, that would be the...
Yes, Dennis.
That would be the only aspect that I would take basically a black line to, so you would not be able to see the names.
Exactly who you're thinking of.
Yep.
Um, there were two different names, just to be clear. All right, so that will be part of it. And then, let's see if I can get to the next screen share. I have also started to work on, this is the wrong one, the summary report. Which has eluded me. There we go, Newton. So starting to put together the summary report. The intent of this is so you have documentation that, hey, you did a survey. It's also to be able to send out to anybody who took the survey, who might want to read the results, that they can read the summary and the full results for posting on the website. And this is the first stage of the outreach that we have for this master plan work, which we're not done the master plan chapter. We have to get more input, but I'm gonna take the results from the survey and start working them into the master plan chapter that you guys have seen a draft of, um, with the intent that this helps to start to formulate what might be goals and actions, or at least influences them. Um, some of the major outcomes are that locations really key for where people are okay with either denser housing or more housing. Um, and there are locations that people did not want to have any more housing. I did not cross-reference any of that yet with where do you live versus where you might want or not want new housing. But often people don't want more housing in their own backyards. Some are okay with it. So that was one of the big findings. Um, one of the next ones was protecting natural resources. It was just about the highest priority. If you take, if you combine high priority or somewhat of priority, it got the highest. People want to maintain their rural character. Now, I've talked with you guys before about what rural character means, and it can mean a big range to a lot of people. Kind of depends on what you're used to and what you like. Um, but, you know, people have impact, have concerns about the impacts that what more housing might bring to taking away from the reasons they choose to make Newton their home. Maybe you are okay with more housing, but you don't want it to impact the natural resources. You don't want it to impact the water. You don't want it to impact traffic or schools or taxes. Those are usually the, the main drivers. Lots of opinions on affordable housing and workforce housing. And if I had to take a shot in the dark, some of that just comes from people get confused by what those terms mean.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which is very common. So one of the things when we do the next round of outreach, which would ideally be an in-person/hybrid event, um, that would be something we would dive into a little bit more about what does workforce housing mean? Um, what does affordable mean? What are the income thresholds of what that means? I will stress that affordable and workforce housing does not translate to low-income Section 8 housing. Very low-income housing is certainly a need, but that is not the entire part of the story. We're talking about affordable housing being things for teachers, firefighters, retail workers, waitresses. Um, so that's usually when we're talking affordability, what income threshold we're talking about. So I will also be including, um, some additional information about, you know, mixed income options, about what rental means for Newton. You guys don't have a lot of rental properties, although you're higher than a lot of similar-sized communities. Um, and then what housing options and how to incorporate that for all ages. So we're, I will say, I did not find in looking at the results, a heavy skew towards 55-plus. I only want to emphasize that because we did reach out a little bit more to some of the 55-plus communities, which is great. We want to hear from them. We also have a lot of data recently from the, um, the name of the program's escaping me. We did some survey...
Age-friendly communities.
Age-friendly communities work that we did in Newton through my office. Um, so we have a little bit more insight as to some of the housing challenges for folks that are a little bit older. Also within the report, and I'm probably gonna pare this down a little bit, I do want to have people hear from other folks who live in Newton. I don't want it to just be my synthesis and, I'll say, jargon. What did people actually have to say? So taking some direct quotes from the survey that show the spectrum of no more housing, maybe housing, but it depends, I have some concerns to, yes, more housing. Because you guys did have a gamut. It probably skewed a little bit more towards no more housing than some communities. But that's okay, because we're not trying to tell anybody that they have to build more housing. We're just trying to provide opportunity so you can meet your state obligations and some of your community goals that do say you want to ensure that there is the ability to have housing while protecting your character. So balancing a lot of needs. We can't stop development, but we can at least help make it so it is meeting your community goals and fitting into the fabric of Newton.
Right.
So my goal is to have that summary worked up, because the survey only ended last Thursday. So this is fairly recent survey data, is to have it for you for your next meeting. We probably won't have time to discuss it, but if I can get your blessing at that point, being able to send it out to the folks who responded and getting it posted on the town website.
Sounds good.
So that's my...
Sounds good to me.
I'm happy to answer any other, if you have specific questions you want me to go through or anything, I'm happy to.
Raina, did you say something? Thought I heard somebody.
Yeah, that, it sounded good to me.
She likes it.
There you go.
I thought she sneezed.
Nope, I think you did a great job. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, and the next step, um, sort of public engagement-wise, it's a little bit behind our original schedule, but wanting to do a sort of next in-person educational session where we could have it as part of a planning board meeting. We can choose another night. Probably January, because I think by the time we work through some other things in your caseloads, I think we're not gonna be able to get it in for November. And to do something in December just honestly does not work very well. But January might be sort of the good alternative once we get past the holidays. Because what, we'll, we can keep working on the master plan. We will not get it finished before that public outreach event, because we want to hear from people.
Right.
But we can get it to a, a really solid draft point. So once we hear from people, we can make tweaks and then get that adopted. We've been working on the land use regulation audit, which I should be able to present at about the same time as the public engagement. So the timing might dovetail really nicely on that.
Sounds good to me.
I know I've thrown a lot at you guys this evening.
Just keep plugging away at it like we've been doing, that's all.
Okay.
Oh, just to piggyback since you already picked up the age-friendly community, um, that survey was complete. Um, I think we got three more responses than you did, probably all from the same people.
Yeah.
The next step for the age-friendly community program is to have a public outreach occasion, which, quite honestly, we're looking at probably the end of October, the beginning of November to get direct public input on basically four key topics. And that will be used, and that will be, go into the final summary of the product.
So in November, we end up meeting on the 14th and 28th.
Yep. The 28th one's Thanksgiving.
The week before that, the 23rd.
Early this year, okay.
And then we're supposed to be with Jen, what did we say? Probably the second week in October?
Yeah, for doing the ordinance work.
Yeah.
So that would be the 7th, I'm sorry, the 24th.
That'll be the 9th. You want to do, what, the 13th, the first, first meeting of the month?
Uh, the first meeting's on the 10th.
I mean, the 14th, yeah.
Second meeting's on the 24th.
In November?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said October.
Yeah, the 14th and 28th.
14th and 28th is November's date.
Yeah. How's the 14th sounding to you? The week before the holiday? How's the 14th sound to you, the week before the holiday?
For what again?
The 14th, November 14th?
For doing what?
What Jim was talking about.
Oh, the age.
Age-friendly.
I have to speak to the, get the steering committee together. They, hopefully will choose a date that, we're working with somebody else at RPC.
Yeah, that doesn't directly have to be a planning board. You guys don't have to.
I'm doing that to keep you guys informed, because I ended up being the contact person.
I didn't know if you wanted to do it during a planning board meeting or not.
No, they're actually considering doing that as a lunchtime.
Oh, okay.
Since they're trying to get more older folk to come out.
To come for lunch?
It's easier to get people to come to lunch than a seven o'clock meeting at night.
You got to work, work, that's it, right? You got to work the crowd.
It's dark out early and a lot of people don't drive.
Well, you let me know what to serve them for lunch, maybe I'll come.
We didn't say we were feeding anybody, we're just having it in the early afternoon as. Trust me, there are enough bad jokes going around that day that I was feeling really elderly.
So since a lot of our discussion tonight has been to have the October 17th meeting, which is your second meeting, do a lot of work, I'm going to recommend that you guys on October 10th, I'm sorry, October 24th be a work session, that on October 10th, we do not continue any cases to October 24th.
Yep, that sounds good.
I will actually already plan on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're enough out that that should be feasible.
Yep.
Okay.
It's fine.
That'll be perfect. So we can do that whole meeting towards that. Works for me.
Anything else? I'll adjourn the meeting at 7:53. Thank you.